Excellent. So we will call the meeting to order. Plant Field Planning and Zoning Commission, Wednesday, February 21st. Special meeting. And I'll do roll call, starting on left.
Frank Mills.
June Gaddy.
Bart Haskell.
John Meyer.
Carlos Startings.
A. K. Kitch.
Ryan Gray.
Katie Neil.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and there are no alternates to appoint because all full members are present. So moving on to public hearing. A-24, 1SP of Iphone Savant requesting a special permit per section 12.28 accessory dwelling unit to construct 760 square foot ADU on property located at 65 Squaw Rock Road, assessors map 22, block 88B, lot 7A, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant? All right, come on up and just give us kind of an overview of what it is you're doing.
We wanted to go outside and let the others have the conference room pass away and talk for any debate.
And staff had noted that there was a variance approved for this property.
If you look at staff report on the third or second page of this particular application, you do have a site plan layout. It was a house with an attached garage, and the variance was granted for the apartment to be located to the left of the garage. Our regulations require that the apartment be a budding the house, you know, heated living space, and they could not do that due to the location of the septic system as well. So this was the alternative.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question about the application?
I think it is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from board members on the application? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bart. I have a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let the minutes show all members voted in favor. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting. Call it to order. There's no additions or corrections because this is a special meeting. Citizen participation. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or question for the board, this is your opportunity, as long as it's not a public hearing. Unfinished old business. Item A-24, 1SP of Iphone Savant requesting special permit per section 12.28 accessory dwelling units to construct 760 square foot ADU on property located at 65 Squaw Rock Road, assessors map 22, block 88B, lot 7A, RA 60 zoning district. Are there any points for discussion from board members?
I would move to approve with the conditions stipulated that the ADU must be on the same electric meter as the house, and the ADU must meet all building code requirements.
All right, I have a motion by Bart to approve with conditions as read.
Okay.
And I have a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, application is approved with those conditions. So if you have questions, you can talk to the staff. So application is approved with conditions. All right, moving on to new business. Item A-24-5SP of Jane Baza requesting a modification of proof earth excavation permit 23-21SP to adjust hours of operation on property located at 0 Snake Meadow Road, assessors map 28, block 122, lots 13 and 14, RA 60 zoning district. And this does require a public hearing.
Correct.
So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Regular meeting, it's my birthday, so we're gonna have a big birthday. I'll bring cake afterwards. So I have a motion by June to schedule that for March 12th.
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Scheduled to public hearing. Ryan, I know there was a question about hours on that. Would we be able to pull the minutes from that meeting just to, so we can, you know, see what was done at that meeting? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
I don't remember. I might have already pulled them.
Okay.
They didn't address it, and we don't have to record it on file anymore?
No, we don't. That was from 2017. But I did go back through the file. It was noted in the site plan what the hours were. It was just not, it was just not noted well in the comments from the town planner.
Okay. Yeah, if we can just pull the documentation for the public hearing, that would be helpful. Item B-24-6SP Scott Tetro requesting special permit for construction of a 30 by 50 metal garage for property at 354 Kate Downing Road, assessors map 18, block 12, lot 19, RA 60 zoning district. And this also requires a public hearing.
The motion that we scheduled this for public hearing.
A second. All right, motion by John, second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, scheduled to public hearing in March. Review and act on the minutes. It says December 12th, but I believe it was January 9th, minutes.
Can we act out those as a public hearing?
Minutes?
It's on the agenda.
So it'd be a correction that it should be the January 9th minutes that we're reviewing minutes for it. Did anybody have any modifications or changes to the minutes?
I thought they were ready.
Yeah, they're welcome.
Welcome. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bart.
I'll second.
Second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence. Is there anything other than what was in the packets?
Nope, just what I gave you time.
Okay, very good. Report from zoning enforcement.
Well, we have the reports and all of course, one of the questions is from the board. We do have a trial scheduled for 32-44 Morris Road. That would be on April 5th. But at this point, it looks like we had a stipulation agreement, I don't want to try.
Okay. All right, thank you. Report from planning.
Nothing new. We're still working on the down road bridge project, trying to secure power easements so the relocation power lines can hold. Tree clearing should begin next month at some point.
Very good. Moving on to other. Item A, Greg Lato preliminary discussion of potential conservation subdivision on Spalding Road, assessors map 26, block 10, lot 12. Do we have speaking for the applicant?
Yes.
All right.
Put this in a spot where everybody can see this. I do have some 11 by 7 minutes as well. Play along with, I think I have these. All right, to put a record, I'm Norv Tivo-Killing, the Engineering Associates. I am here representing Greg Lato this evening for this property that's located on the east side of Spalding Road. The property is in the front, kind of where lots 1 and 2 are shown on the first sheet there. It is field, and everything beyond that, going back to the east, is all wooded. The first plan you have here is essentially the yield plan showing the traditional subdivision where we have, this is in the RA 60 zone. We have, we are showing 10 lots with 15% open space parcel in the back, so. And then looking at your subdivision regulations and your zoning regulations, we are required to come before you to get your opinion on whether or not the traditional or the conservation subdivision would be appropriate for this particular parcel. So I have two different layouts for the subdivision, so, for the conservation. So this first one, which is on sheet 2, what we're showing is the roadway with actually nine lots for the subdivision as opposed to the 10. And, you know, the reason for that is, you know, we do need to have, you do have to put 50% of the parcel into open space. And because of the configuration of the parcel and the smaller lots, even though we are allowed 30,000 square feet per lot, it really doesn't work for 30,000 square feet. There are increased setbacks. This particular plan does not show the 50-foot setback that's required from the budding property, so these lots that you see here, actually, the usable area is actually restricted a little bit more. We do have a small wetland pocket here, and we also have this north to south wetland that kind of bisects the property about 2/3 of the way down. We've got almost 10 acres of open space, and we're just shy of 20 acres for the entire parcel here. This particular layout does not meet your regulations for a couple of reasons. First of all, the first four parcels are essentially located in the field. Secondly, the way your regulations read is that we cannot have a greater percent, we cannot have a lesser percentage of wetlands in the open, in the open space, or a greater percentage than on the lot itself. So this property has approximately 4% of the parcel as wetlands. So what we would need to do is include 4% of the wetlands in the developed area. Based on the shape of this lot, it just doesn't really work. And if you look at page number three that you have there, we do have a subdivision layout that meets these requirements. But, so what we're showing, we have, we have a total of a little over four acres in the front. We're preserving the fields. I mean, we have a roadway that is going to go up about, you know, for the first four or five lots here, then a shared driveway that goes back to these two lots. So we had to encompass portions of the wetlands in these lots, and we're able to maintain the total amount of open space by having an additional almost six acres back there. In my opinion, we're really kind of forcing this configuration in order to make it work. And I'm sure in some instances, the conservation subdivision is appropriate. Another thing too that I found interesting, that first, for the traditional subdivision, it would require about 1,600 square feet of wetland impact. For the conservation subdivision that does not meet your requirements, we have no wetlands impact. And for the conservation subdivision that does meet your regulations, we have about 3,400 square feet of wetlands impact. So, you know, I think that, in this particular instance, the traditional subdivision is much more appropriate. And the other thing too, you know, we only have, we're only able to achieve eight lots with this particular configuration as well. So I believe the way that the regulations read is that, this commission ultimately would have the decision as to what direction we go into. I think my client was perfectly, I don't want to say content, but he was, he would have accepted, you know, the one lesser lot with the conservation on the front here. But if you look at this, we are disturbing a lot more area here to get, to get two less lots. We're kind of creating these crazy lot lines in order to be able to meet the requirements of the open space configurations and the regulations that are written. And for this particular property, in my opinion, it just doesn't work. Yes, sir.
What would the lots be used for? I mean, you're talking about the requirement we have is to preserve farmland, open fields of possible. We're gonna put a subdivision there, who's gonna farm it? Me? You? Okay.
Hold on, it's not a public hearing, so we can't have interaction with the public. It's a preliminary discussion.
Okay. Yes. That'll be my farm.
But there will be a public hearing, so you would absolutely have opportunity at a public hearing.
Understood.
Depending on the direction.
Understood. But it's still a subdivision. Regardless, it's still a subdivision.
Right, the standard subdivisions do not go to public hearing, what the commission wants.
Gotcha, understood.
Mm-hmm.
So if it meets requirements.
Right, so that's, you know, we happen to answer any questions you may have at this point. Even in this configuration, you know, we still have, we still have about 700 feet of roadway you have to build, plus this, these additional shared driveways. We actually have to include these wetlands on the properties themselves. And even though we have, we're proposing 3,400 square feet or so of wetlands impact, we all know how it works when someone gets to their property, you know, especially if something that, for a property that's kind of located way back here, I think over time there may be some additional impacts as well, the way that, you know, people over time remove trees or want to expand their yards and so forth, so. That's where we are. Like I said, I would, we would request that you accept the traditional subdivision in this particular instance, and that's the direction we go in. And like I said, the other option, you know, with regard to the option number two that we show here does not meet your subdivision requirements, even though we are proposing nearly 10 acres of open space in the back, that I think are, that's quite a nice wooded area that would, you know, be attached to this subdivision. And then, like I said, the third one really kind of fragments everything, have fragmented open spaces, you've got wetlands disturbances, and just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to really fit with this particular property.
Just a curiosity question, Ron.
Yep.
So on the traditional, you show the impact of the wetlands on the, I don't know if that's northerly part of the property. So why is it on the conservation one that it's on the southern?
Because what I was looking to do first, I was going to have, I looked to possibly do a shared driveway here and then go back in this direction over here. But what was happening when I did that, these lots got bigger, and I was, and I was separating this little percentage here from the rest of the lots, and I couldn't, I couldn't make the open space requirements. I couldn't get the 10 acres without creating yet another fragment in this corner here. So you would have had, you know, four different areas, and I couldn't, I couldn't create the contiguous lot here that we're seeing.
Now, that corner in the open space lot here, point to on the right, is there any actual road access, or is that abut all the surrounding properties as other property?
That abuts.
So we're basically, you'd be socking in a wooded section that no one could access except the property under some subdivision limits.
Correct.
What material would you use to cross the wetlands? Are you thinking a bridge, or are you going to put culverts down?
Well, that's not for tonight's discussion. I don't think.
That type of scope.
Well, it does kind of play into which direction the commission wants to go, so I think that's a valid question.
I can retract it if it's a concern.
No, as long as the staff clears it, we're good.
I have no issue answering that.
I'm always worried about staying in the frame, you know?
Oh, I know. You know, no, there is, there is a seasonal brook that runs in that spot there, so what I would probably propose is probably like an open bottom box cover, something of that nature.
So then, Ryan, given the first that does not conform with the conservation regulations, if they wanted to pursue that, they'd have to request a change to the conservation regulations.
No, it's actually a question of discretion which way you want to go. We haven't passed, chosen to go with the standard subdivision rather than the conservation, depending on the layout of the land.
Right, so what I'm saying, the option that he presented does not meet regulations.
So that conservation subdivision that doesn't meet the regulations, the only option would be to have a text amendment.
Correct.
So.
Which he's not proposing.
Yeah, no.
You're proposing, you're leaning in the direction of standard development.
Correct, correct. I mean, it's something, you know, I think there are a few things in the conservation subdivision regulations currently that could be improved.
Thank you.
You know, obviously, that's another discussion at another time, but I think, I think that there are some things that could be done that would make a conservation subdivision a little more attractive to some builders if they had a little more flexibility.
I understand. So just to explain, the conservation subdivision regulations say that you cannot have more wetlands in the open space area than you have in the developable area.
Percentage, percentage wise.
Percentage wise. And that is because if you had a lot that was, say, 50% wetlands, you couldn't take and develop all the woodland and then put the other 50% into conservation because it's not really useful land.
Yeah, we're not going to make that.
But this is one of those situations where the best place for the houses are outside of where this pocket of wetlands is. So it's basically.
And I think, for instance, you know, if you were, if you were to consider something, maybe you just say the, you know, the open space parcel could not contain more than, you know, 25% wetlands, or just pick a percentage rather than say, you know, they can't exceed what you have initially in there. Pick a percentage that you need, that you would prefer not to see within the open space. And, you know, and then, because I, you know, personally, I think, I think it kind of defeats the purpose if you actually have to use the wetlands in the developed areas, you know, and the, and I understand that, you know, there are a lot of other moving parts within these regulations as well, but like I said, there are some things and some language I think that could be improved to make it a little more flexible for the developers.
Yeah. On the shared, oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
Question about this little park of wetland. What's the characteristics of it? Is it, would it?
It's a, yes, no, it's not a real pool, it's just a, it's just a small depression within the terrain. That, you know, water, you've got some water around it, some area around it that just kind of drained there, and over the years has created some hydric conditions.
Has anybody done any kind of functional value assessment of that?
Not at this point. We have, we have the delineation report that was prepared by Joseph DeRoe. Typically, what we do is we have the functions and value assessment prepared when we're ready to submit to the, by the commission.
And how many square feet is that wetland approximately, do you know?
Oh my gosh. It's probably 15 to 1,800 square feet.
Ryan, the traditional subdivision that he's showing, the open space, is that required under our regs, or could they put two more lots there if they chose to go, if they want a traditional?
They can't share a driveway with four houses, right?
Yeah, can only do two with a traditional.
Yeah. And the shared driveway, does that require one of the lots to have roof coverage?
So it does have a roof coverage on the cul-de-sac.
It does, and it's sufficient to meet the?
Yeah, it's the, it's the 40-foot accessory.
Okay. So in order to, in order to have those additional two lots, they would have to extend the road, but we have a limit on the length of the cul-de-sac road, am I correct with that? 800 feet?
800 feet, from the center line of the intersecting road to the center line to the center point of the cul-de-sac.
And you're not permitted to put an additional road off of the cul-de-sac to elongate it, correct?
Right, just a driveway.
Okay, so the houses are limited by the limitation of the?
Appreciate that, was unclear.
Yeah.
So to answer your question on the open space, the commission is allowed to either take 10% of the land for open space or 10% of the value prior to development, up to 10%. So it's either or.
The field, that, that open space that we show is about 15% of the total area of the parcel. And, you know, like Ryan said, the other thing would be the fee of open space, where you take 10% of the, of the value of the raw land. And then typically, I believe that as each lot is sold, a portion of that is paid into the coffers of the town for them to be able to acquire open space.
All right, any other questions for applicant or staff? So the preliminary discussion is to advise the applicant if we want them to pursue the conservation subdivision or pursue the standard development in that area. Do you have any strong opinions one way or another?
I'd have a key to see that farmland kept, Spalding Road.
Yeah. I might, I think we'll come look at this a little bit more. Do you have that option?
So there's no application presented at this time, right?
Right.
Because this is just preliminary discussion to see which application they would submit.
Or maybe a modification or one, or suggestion for that? In order to meet the requirements.
So the third page does meet all conservation development requirements, correct?
If I had not reviewed it yet, but.
Okay. But when you were drawing it, you were keeping it in line with what was required with the regulations.
Correct, correct. And it does, like I said, it does result in a reduction of two building lots. I mean, obviously, from a, from a development standpoint for, you know, builders these days with the cost of road construction and building materials and land acquisition and all that kind of stuff, the margins are a lot less, so. Two less lots is, you know, is a significant hit on shared developer.
And four lots on map three, shared driveway off the cul-de-sac, that's correct?
Yes, because you can do that on a conservation subdivision, you can have up to, up to five lots, a shared driveway.
Appreciate that.
But you can't do that on a subdivision.
So it sounds like the board is not prepared to make recommendations this evening, am I hearing that correctly? Or do you want to tell the applicant to move forward with the conservation application?
Well, the green application is strongly suggested, but is not required. The applicant can always move forward with an application.
Tradition.
Either or, it'll be up to the commission decide at that point in time, so.
And one does not preclude the other, right?
Right, so it's really up to the commission on whether they want the traditional or the conservation. Or if the applicant has time, we could possibly entertain a text amendment to the, to the conservation subdivision regulations to make it easier for them.
And that's something I can discuss with.
The applicant.
With the applicant.
Sure.
And Greg is here this evening, Greg Lato is here to see me, so.
I would be in favor of, if you're preserving farmland, possibly allowing more than five lots on one driveway so they could utilize all of the back area. I don't know, that might be an option for you.
Is that extension allowable, though?
So it would have to be a text amendment.
Oh, okay, got it.
Right.
All right, I was gonna say, okay. Or could there be a reconfiguration? I don't think the lots are numbered, but.
Yeah, well, they, I mean, the problem is, you know, the problem is with the conservation subdivision is that, you know, it's not just, you know, the number of lots on the shared driveways, it's that you, you have to put 50% of the land into open space.
Right, but we could also modify that if you were preserving farmland. So because if you want to put the emphasis on farmland.
On the farmland, and then perhaps the percentage could be reduced. And I think that would be acceptable if we got, you know, if we got the lots out of it and we were able to preserve, you know, the areas that report to the town, then I think we're certainly amenable to that. I think the big thing, you know, as far as we're concerned, like I said, from a, you know, strictly from a financial standpoint, two less lots after purchasing the land and doing all the infrastructure is rather significant.
Don't worry about money. I mean, we're looking, I'm looking at farmland, and I'm looking at open space that only the people that live there will get to. I don't even know what the open space looks like if it's.
It's wooded.
It's wooded, and you've got that land.
It's really, it's really nice woods, too. There's no, there are no, it's not, there's no invasive vegetation, there aren't any green briars and Russian olive, all that kind of stuff that you see these days. It's a really nice, beautiful area.
It's gonna be socked in one way or another. It's not hundable because there's property around it, it's not locked because there's no access, so it's a beautiful piece of property, but it literally is accessible to no one.
Right, well, it'll be accessible to the neighborhood. It'll be, it'll be.
I'd like to hear.
It'll be accessible to the people within the development.
Sure. I just keep taking to.
And these are all same family homes?
They'll be same family homes, correct.
Are we shy of those? Depends on the price point there.
That's right.
I'm sorry, man, that's a build division problem. We've built divisions off Third Street, we've been done, and people will play. We've built divisions off Third Street, if you've done, and people play, it's not affordable because of everything that goes into it.
Yeah.
And everybody wants the Twitter home with the, you know, Eastern Connecticut price.
And but if you do look at the inventory, now, I mean, we get calls on a weekly basis from, from, you know, real estate agents, from builders, you know, looking, looking for, for properties to sell, looking, looking for empty land to build on. The inventory right now is very, very low.
So it sounds like the board is leaning towards conservation, and then the applicant would have to decide if they want to proceed with the conservation regulations as they are, or if they wanted to propose changes in order to allow more lines.
And I could, and I could, you know, certainly sit with Ryan and, you know, see if we could come up with something that is going to be satisfactory to the commission, you know, to, to, you know, address your concerns or your, your priorities, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Sure, well, and as with all things, when we create regulations, sometimes they don't work in practicality, so.
Right, right.
So sometimes we learn by seeing proposals, so, all right?
I mean, the thing is, we're long on woods and playing field, we're getting shorter and shorter on farmland. So I think it's worth taking a look another look at this.
It's always alarming to me, to see farmland.
And since it's preliminary discussion, no, no vote is needed, so.
Right, and that, I mean, it is, it is specifically written within your conservation subdivision requirements or considerations, I don't want to say requirements, considerations.
Sure. Okay, so we'll proceed that way?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Norm. Appreciate it.
Have a great night. All right, moving on to item B, which is the appointment of zoning enforcement officer. So Katie O'Neil has been appointed by the first electment as the zoning enforcement officer, so we must also vote to appoint her as our CEO. And then we must also vote to retain Ryan as CEO for the purpose of acting in her absence and then wrapping up cases that he already has in progress. And I think we could do that with one motion?
Is that by laws, or is it something that...
I think it's actually by statute.
So it's by statute?
Yeah, yeah, so chapter 124, I don't know the section, but it should be in chapter 124.
So we need a motion to...
Yeah, so we would have a motion to appoint Katie as the CEO, and then to retain Ryan as CEO for acting and continuing enforcement actions that are pending.
So a move is written as explained by the chair.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion by Bart, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations on your appointment. All right, moving on to item C, A-24 referral for Dow Road bid, bridge replacement utility easements. Do you want to give the summary on that, Ryan?
Sure. So we are trying to acquire easements for Eversource to run power lines and poles on private property. Issue that we're running into is whatever you have an easement going onto a property, any people that have an interest in the property, meaning a mortgage holder, lien holders, et cetera, they all have to sign off on this before the easement came to grant. And we are having some problems with a couple of properties getting some of the lien holders to sign off. So in any event that we fail on that, we would look to take, to do a taking, well, condemnation of that area. All property owners have no issue with what we're trying to do, it's just trying to get the lien holders to...
How many are you talking about?
Two. Possibly.
So condemnation is an eminent domain, essentially?
Basically, but we want to be...
But it's just an easement, you're not taking the property, you're taking the right to use a portion of it for this project.
Right.
But then that easement stays in place for maintenance of the project, is that right?
So that easement will be for Eversource to run power poles and lines over the property.
Okay.
And we're talking about just off the edge of the roadway.
But then those easements are in effect because now the poles have moved, so then that easement stays in effect because of the location.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
What are the next steps then, if you need something from us, what's the procedure?
So you would have to vote on this in order to allow us to move forward with the condemnation of the area.
Okay, are we at that point, or are we approaching that point?
We might be at a stalemate with one property.
What is the A-24 review?
So anytime the town is to take, purchase, or sell property, it has to be referred to this commission. Do they then have to go to a town meeting?
I don't think so.
Depends on the dollar value of the...
I don't believe so, we're talking about very little dollar value here.
This is a public works project, right? It's for the benefit of an infrastructure component of the town.
Yeah, so the Dow Road Bridge, we have to do some work to it, we're replacing the bridge, and the work that they perform requires us to move some of the Eversource poles and lines.
And a problem for Eversource, their game, if they have the access?
Yes, they just require the easement so they can...
Do you anticipate taking action on this in the next two weeks if we give you the access for condemnation?
We may start the process.
So our permission just lets you have the ability to negotiate and move forward without additional? And how long is it in effect for? So for example, if something happened and you didn't act on it within a period of time, does our referral expire, is that for...
No.
So we can vote on that tonight because it requires no public hearing, no other action?
I would move that we empower Catherine O'Neil and Ryan Bag to take action as necessary for condemnation of the two properties in question regarding the easement move for the Dow Road project.
Just for clarity, it's not us taking the action, it was the town?
Okay, forgive me. The town of Plainfield, I would move that the town of Plainfield has permission for the two properties in question to pursue condemnation at the discretion of the planning and zoning office.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action is approved. There was discussion of gravel on the original, and I see that that was removed, so I just want to make sure it's on next month's, okay? Yeah, please make sure that's on next month's. Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other action, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by June.
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good.